Evening, everyone. Welcome. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. We had a city employee who was critically injured this morning in an accident, and Ms. Isby is going to lift him up in prayer, please.
If you'd like, please feel free to join us.
If you're about with me, our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you give to us on a daily basis. We just, Lord, lift our sanitation employee up to you and just ask, Lord, that you cover him as well as his family during this time. Thank you, Lord, for this city that you've blessed us with. We are so thankful, Lord, and we just always want to give you the honor and the praise that you do with any decisions that we make. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting into order. Ms. Hurd, would you call the robe, please?
Mr. Hawkins, Mr. Grimes, Mr. Spurgers, Ms. Mel, Mr. Ledbetter, Mr. Hawks, Mr. Jones, Ms. Isby.
All right, you should have received copies of the July 22, 2025 City Council minutes. Any corrections, changes, or comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 25. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes eight to zero. All right. Judge Claussen is going to be a little bit late. He is in the middle of a trial, and I thought I'd clear it up, too. Our employee was not hurt on the job. He was hurt going to work this morning. So, next on the agenda, we have the Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins, sir, turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is consideration to approve waiving all three readings for ordinances on tonight's City Council agenda, and I'll take a motion to that effect. So, I have a motion and a second to waive all three reading. And wow, I can tell we hadn't been meeting for an orange. All three reads for ordinances on the July 22 City Council agenda. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve a public hearing to close a drainage easement at 1500 South Amity Road. And resolution for this is Resolution R. 25.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Yep?
Yes, counsel, this is a request from the applicant to close the drainage easement. You can see by the blue line right there that that was constructed in 1992, so the drainage is going a different way. The purple is the easement that they are requesting that we change. All utilities have signed off on it, and we are asking for a public hearing at the August 12 meeting. I believe it says 26th in your packet.
And I know that we had announced to everybody that we were going to a summer schedule, but we're going to go back to our regular council agenda this, so August 12 will be a good date.
Do we need a motion to have the meeting set back up again? Do we do that first? I'll make a motion that the council meets on August 12.
We have a motion and a second that the council meet on August 12, and there will be a public hearing on this drainage easement at 1500 South Amity Road. Is that correct? Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ann.
Will it bother you all if I leave that up there for the next one, because I have another one right behind it, and I don't want to mess this up?
Okay. Well, let's see.
Did we vote on just to have the next meeting on August 12, or did we?
Resolution.
Very good. That's what I, that was my.
I put the wording in there for both of them, actually, for the, for the date change and for the, I did.
But there will be a public hearing on this easement closure on August the 12 for the people at home, right?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Ann. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to appropriate funding for tornado siren replacement and repair for the Transportation Department. And good evening. What's going on?
Well, about a month or so ago, lightning took out the tornado siren behind the fire station on Salem Road. We had American Signal Corporation come look at it and determined it couldn't be replaced, I mean repaired. It had to be replaced. So, we're just asking for appropriation for that.
Remember how old that, that one siren is, Eric?
I don't. It's, oh, we've got several more that are getting some age on them, but kind of steadily replace them as we can.
Okay. Siren is 50 grand?
So, the siren is about 35. There's $7,000 more parts needed for other upgrades to some of the other sirens, and then there's a little bit built in for the rest of the year as well if anything happens.
Well, the, we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance for, with the emergency clause, to replace and repair the siren on Salem Road. Is that correct, Jacob? All right.
Orderment's number?
Fifty-six.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby, Ms. Mel.
Aye.
And this one has an emergency clause. I'm sorry. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Isby? Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Both pass eight to zero. You're back, Ann.
I am back.
Mr. Hawkins.
Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow school facilities in the I-3 zone for property located at 225 Tilk Avenue. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on?
Last night.
Last night. By golly, it's fresh off the presses.
Yes, it is.
And at that time, the Commission reviewed the request and voted?
Unanimously.
Unanimously. It says X to X, and so that's why, that's why you're there and I'm here. This be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and it was a unanimous vote. And, hi, Ann.
Hi. Okay, so, the applicant who has come to Skatamy is requesting a conditional use permit in an I-3 zone, which is not allowed by law. So, what their plan is, is to construct 16 class rooms and have a good bit left over for expansion at this site. We had some people ask last night about the traffic pattern and everything, so I put it up there to show the red arrows for ingress, egress. And so, we're just asking for your approval.
And, and I'm sorry if Andy mentioned this. How did the Commission vote last night?
Unanimously.
Okay. Great. That was about our packet, doesn't it?
Four.
That's because the meeting hadn't happened yet.
It was unanimous for allowing it.
I would motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit for property located at 225 Tilk Road. Any further discussion?
That was the other, yeah, the hours. They, the applicant had asked for seven to five, and that was amended last night from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., just to allow for school programs and things like that.
It would be seven to nine?
Yes, sir. That's the only amendment. But yes, we're fine with the rest of them. Right?
Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ann. Counsel, thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Sir.
Counsel, before we move to the Public Service Committee, I'd like to ask Judge Chuck Claussen, if he would, to come up and talk to you about something he's got going on. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry that flew in here like this. I was actually, we just finished up a Capitol murder trial. So, that's what I was doing. And, and again, I appreciate you all being patient with me. So, thank you for the opportunity to come speak. Good news, I'm not asking for money. That's always, that's always nice. I'm here because I know you're leaders of the community. You obviously have a vested interest in the success of the city of Conway. I've had the pleasure to work with many of you for a number of years when I was a city attorney. And the ones that I haven't got to work with, I know that we've talked on several occasions, and one thing's that, one of the things that's abundantly clear is individually and as a body, you have a passion for what you do and a passion for the community and constituents that you serve, whether they be in the boardroom all day or the courtroom with me all day. So, I'm here to catch you up on what the Faulkner County Drug Court is doing to help those battling addiction and involved in the criminal justice system. So, just as a brief overview, what is Drug Court? So, Drug Court's an intensive, court-supervised outpatient rehab program. And so, what it's kind of consists of is those that have high risk and high needs. So, they've been in addiction for a long time, usually have a long history of being in the court system. We give them the opportunity to, and the tools, to get sober and stay sober. It consists of four phases, and then an aftercare before they graduate from treatment. And then finally, they get to seal their charges. So, that's one of the things, if they do everything that they're supposed to do, that's kind of the big benefit to them, is they can have their charges sealed and kind of start new. Now, it's not a perfect program. It's not 100% effective. I'm not here to tell you that. But with dealing with the population that we deal with, we have a very, very high success rate, and it's much better than the typical tracks that people take as far as prison or regular probation. One of the reasons we have the success that we do is because of the staff that I work with. And so, I wanted to kind of take just a moment to introduce them. I've got my program director, Mr. Julian Wiggins, Officer Cynthia, y'all just kind of waving hands. I'm not here by myself. Officer Cynthia Hunter and Agent Tobias, that are my supervising agents. Ms. Jackson, Ty Jackson. Phil's over here. Phil and Phil Burr and Haley Yeate, they're my peer support. That's kind of a new addition to the, to the team, and they're fantastic and really kind of improve the communication and how we work with our participants. We have Ms. Latoya Arrington and then Ms. Whitney Rowe. I don't think Jacob Webb, my prosecutor's here, or Ms. Karen Walker, not my, my public defender, but they're all part of the team, too. So, we've got a big staff. The biggest thing I wanted to do is kind of catch you up on what we've done lately. So, we've been fortunate enough to apply for and, and be awarded two separate grants. And so, there's a, there's a grant for the participants in Drug Court. There's also a grant for those that are just justice involved, those that have been charged with a criminal offense, but, but have substance abuse disorder, and they need some attention, some help, and some services. And so, we've got those, too. Now, we got these grants because of the work of my staff. We were told in the beginning, if you apply for grants, both of these, you may get lucky and get one. We got both of them. What that says is that, one, the staff did a great job in putting these applications together, but it also speaks to the need that we have in our community. And that's the thing that we're trying to address. To be able to get these grants, we're total over $2 million over the next four years. Obviously, there's a high need in our community. So, with these grants, over the next four years, they're going to help us address these needs. So far, what we've done, and we just got them at the first of the year, so a lot of it's been prep work, but a lot of the plans that we're implementing now, we've talked about for, for years. The Drug Court's been around for about 20 years, and so we have a long history of success with folks. And like I said, it's not, it's not in any way 100% effective, but, but the recidivism rate is so much lower than going into those regular tracks that the criminal justice system is limited to. Mr. Jones will tell you about that. All right, so we've.
Not that I was in the court.
Not that you were in my court, but you sure saw a lot of court.
Yes, I did.
And you see the people coming back.
No, I mean, I wasn't involved in the system. I was working in the court.
That's right. That's right.
As you straighten that out, Thea.
He kept it safe for a long time. But listen, Mr. Jones can tell you, what you see is people coming back over and over and over again, and then you see their kids coming back. Okay? So, you, we see generations, and, and a lot of it, the root of it is drug addiction. And so Drug Court tries to assess or, or at least take that head-on. So, what we've done is we've increased our assessments over the last several months by about 250%. The assessments are just a screening process for those that may become eligible for Drug Court. We can't take everybody. Again, we take those high-risk, high-needs individuals, and not everybody qualifies. Maybe they have a drug offense or even a property crime or something like that, but their criminal history didn't push them in that high-risk, high-needs. So, because of that, we've got, we've laid the foundation for a Track Two, okay, is what we're going to call Track Two. So, we'll take some of the lower-risk folks, but put them in a process, give them resources, and then hopefully, they won't be back in the system again. And if they successfully complete it, they can have, you know, a clear record. So, they can get employment. They can qualify for government services. They can continue their education, whatever that may be. We've provided, we've got some money so we can provide Narcan and community outreach. We've increased our Drug Court participants as well, the number that we're taking on. We've made over 100 contacts with people that are, have been arrested, that are in need of services. We've put together a process to identify these people earlier than we have been, and then stay in touch with them and stay in contact. Peer support's been vital to that. They're actually going over to jail and meeting with these people and finding out what needs they have. So, what, what can we provide them? So, it's medical services, dental services, housing. We've been developing community partnerships with CAPCA, Bethlehem House, Coho, many, many times. If somebody gets some, gets out of jail, they got nowhere to go. So, we got to get them stable housing before we can get the rest of their life stabilized. And so, those three organizations have been crucial in helping us do that. Counseling. So, if they're in the Drug Court program, then they have counseling available. I mentioned Ms. Ty and Ms. Whitney. They provide those counseling services. Well, this, this money allows us to expand that, not only offer more opportunities for those that are in Drug Court, but also the ones that don't qualify for Drug Court or not in Drug Court yet. And so, we've partnered with the Harbor House to provide counseling services, both individually and in group settings, but also parenting classes, anger management, you know, things like that, to, to help these folks. And transportation. Transportation's a huge problem. If they don't have reliable transportation, they can't show up to report to drug testing. They can't show up to their supervising officer. They can't show up to court, can't go meet with their attorneys, can't go to counseling. And so, we've been providing that. We've already provided hundreds of rides to people that have qualified for these services. And one of the things I wanted to point out, if they're not in the Drug Court program, but they've qualified for this other grant money, there's still a program that they have to work, okay? There's still requirements of them. We don't just, you know, here's a free ride, or here's a counseling session. They have to work a program, and that may lead them into Drug Court, or it may just, we can continue that if they wouldn't otherwise qualify, or we don't have room for them, because we, like I said, we can't take everybody. So, the transportation has been huge. Employment. Once you get somebody stable, you get them housing, it's time to get them to work and let them be productive. And so, we've worked, we've got some really great employers that will hire convicted felons or those that have pending charges, and they've been great to work with. And this, one I really want to highlight is Goodwill. Goodwill has a program, the TEO program, where they will hire and train folks. They'll get them OSHA-certified, get them certified to operate forklifts. It provides them with the skill and, and a little resume. They'll help with, with resume writing, so they can go on to bigger and better things. And obviously, if they have regular employment, then that increases their likelihood of success. And they can provide for their families. Education as well. We provided monies for GED, job training, and, and college credits. And all of these resources to help improve the outcomes and reduce the likelihood of people falling back into addiction and reoffending. That's the goal. We'd like to work, work our way out of a job, but unfortunately, the numbers don't, don't show that that's going to happen. We're making a difference in the community. We're making the community safer, and we're making families stronger, and that's the goal. So, epidemic of addiction that we have and that we see on a daily basis in our community, we're at least making a dent, and we're providing people the opportunity and the tools necessary to get sober and stay sober. So, treatment courts work. And again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I know I've talked with many of you individually about kind of what we're doing, but I thought it was important to, to come to you in this setting and let you know what your courts are doing for you, what our staff is doing on a daily basis, and it helps support all the things that you do for Conway.
Thank you, Judge, to you and your staff. I don't know that there's probably any family anywhere that drugs has not touched in some way. So, we appreciate, I appreciate what you and your staff are doing, and it'll make a difference in Conway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, man. And this is something I've seen firsthand. Like I said, it's, you see families just repeating. It's a cycle that you keep in, but you have to keep trying, and I appreciate that, man, because it's a lot of people just.
We give them, we give them that help. I mean, we provide them the opportunity. The participants have to put in the work and find them the right motivations. And, you know, with Drug Court, we have a little more time than in the normal criminal justice process. We have a little more time to learn and see exactly what they need, where their blind spots are. We, we learn about the people, places, and things that they've been involved in and how to get them away from that. We just give them the opportunity to succeed. I, I cannot tell you how satisfying it is to see a person really commit to the program, trust the process, trust the staff. We see the program working. They get back with their kids. They get their GED. They have a job for six months, and next thing you know, they've hit a year sober. They have a future, you know, and it, it doesn't involve avoiding law enforcement, you know, avoiding jail. That, those thoughts are kind of behind them. We're working on continuing to support them even after they're out of Drug Court, and that's another one of the things that these grants will allow us to do. So, we're working for you. We're working for your constituents and, and, and our community, and I just appreciate the opportunity. It's an honor to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Hey, Judge, would you ask your staff to just stand up real quick so we can see them all? Thank you for the job that you do. Thank you. Hey, next up on the agenda, we have public service. First thing we have is a resolution approving the grant application submission for the Summerly Sustainable Solutions Grant Program from the United States Bay Alliance with the Conway Animal Service. I don't know if Spencer, there you are, Spencer.
Switching Claussen's here.
Yeah.
Just give him my paperwork, let him tag that on the end of his. So, yes, here for this resolution, apply for funding from the United Bay Alliance for the Summerly Sustainable Solutions Grant Program. This grant is typically between $4,000 and $8,000. It's, it's very similar to the $20,000 grant that we had in, earlier in the year, but this has some really good peer learning and mentorship attached to it to help build a sustainable TNVR. TNVR program, which we, which we're striving to do.
Counsel, any questions? Spencer.
Adoption, or a motion for adoption resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for the Conway Animal Welfare. Any further discussion?
Just a, just a quick comment here, about like, I'm loving seeing all these grants for animal services, because this means we're doing good work that our taxpayers aren't paying for, so thank you, thank you, thank you, keep it up.
Miss Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
As is eight to zero. I did ask your brother, that was here previously, I did tell him that if you and he decided to go at it again, I was going with you, and he told me that would be a good bet.
Well, if I'm going to get him, I better get him quick, because I think his cardio's better than mine.
Next up, next up is ordinance to accept and approve the appropriation of grant funds for Conway Animal Service. Venture, it's you again.
Yep, I, I actually need to pull this one, there's something, and I've read over here that I don't feel comfortable with, and I want to go back and look at before we fudge some money here. The, it, it looks like we, we have two different grants, and it, I, I want to just make sure that, that we do it correctly. So I'm going to pull that off, that'd be all right.
Okay, counsel?
Good here.
Thanks, Spencer.
Yeah, and since I, I got just a second up here, and people at home are watching, I just wanted to say that this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 out at the shelter, it's 455064 West, there's a free microchip clinic, and the first 200 people to bring their pets by, or first 200 pets, the chips are free, they're going to be registered, that will help us if one of your animals gets loose, escapes, whatever, we can scan it, find out who it belongs to, and get it back to your house. Also, that day, anybody that wants to come adopt a pet, Best Friends Animal Network is going to be sponsoring all those adoptions, so any community members that would like to come adopt a cat, a dog, or two or three, it's going to be paid for. So it'd be a great time if you're thinking about that.
Keep up the good work out there, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Time to start?
11 o'clock.
It's 11:00 to 2:00. So we're going to have kind of a loop around through Joe Hopper sanitation property, and the way I understand it is the animal didn't have to get out of the car. So, yep, be, be exciting, it's a, it's a, it's a great thing, so thank you all very much.
Next up is a resolution approving a grant application submission for the Arkansas Department Community Assistance Grant Program for Parks and Rec, and this is specifically for the rodeo arena. Counsel, I don't know, you know, for a long time, when, back in the day, the Arkansas State Rodeo Finals were here, and it was a, a place that a lot of people came. Since then, our rodeo arena has fallen into disrepair, and Andrew and Robbie are working to get some grants to hopefully get that back up to where we can start having some, some more events there.
Absolutely. So we're just looking for approval to apply to the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant Program. It has a 1.5 maximum fund, and then with a 20% matching requirement, and as the mayor mentioned, this is going to go directly to the rodeo to basically rebuild it.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the submission of the grant application to the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant Program for renovation at the rodeo arena, Don Owens. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass is eight to zero. Thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to congratulate Mr. Thames, because he spoke and presented at Rotary last week, and just did a great job. I mean, I heard other members talk about it, and really talked about all the great things going on in the Parks Department.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's easy to talk about our parks.
How's that, how's, let's talk about something you probably don't want to talk about. How's that new little one doing?
She's good. Not, I, I don't even know how to explain it, her mom and I are over the moon, so.
Yeah, there's nothing like them.
I'm tired, but.
Until you have grand, until you have grandkids.
Yeah, until we have grandkids, yeah. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda, we have public safety, and first up is ordinance approving appropriation of donations fund for the Conway Fire Department. Chief Winter.
Good evening, counsel. We are asking for your acceptance of a check of $5,000 from Centennial Bank to help fund our fire prevention program.
Motion for approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance for the appropriation of donation funds for the Conway Fire Department. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
It's 02557. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter? Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Pass is eight to zero. Thank you, chief. Next up, we have an ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds to replace the HVA unit and generator at the Conway Police Department. Chief Harris, you guys don't need a air conditioner.
I don't, my office is cool. So appreciate you once again letting the fire chief go first, so he's a busy man. So our mobile command unit, actually, it's been around longer than I have at the Conway Police Department, so the fire depart, or the fire department, the air conditioning unit has gone out, and it's 20 years old, outdated, and no longer repairable. So asking to use forfeit your money for that, as well as a generator to put on the command, so this is for, different from the SWAT, you know, this is for like, callouts for civil unrest, or, or drone operations and things like that. So there's a bunch of computer equipment on there we can plug into and get the generator, but also need the air conditioner for weeks like this, so.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, approving appropriating funds to replace the HVAC and generator for Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
Zisby? Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next up, we have an ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds to purchase computer equipment for the Conway Police Department. Chief.
So on this, I guess it's a good thing, if how you look at it, our vehicles have lasted so long that they have outlasted the computer, computers in the car and the software, so 19 of our vehicles have laptops that will not upload Windows 11, so you won't get the security updates or anything else. Plus, we need to get the rocket modems, which have reached the end of life, which allows the officers to use the software and enables our GPS capabilities. So once they go out, so does that. So the good news is, is once we get new vehicles, we can take that, the, the old vehicles that we sell or get rid of, we can take that computer equipment out and put it in the new vehicles and not have to purchase that.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds to purchase computer equipment with the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion?
I got a question, how long is it going to be before we get them back up if we get the equipment?
I'm sorry?
How long would it be before we get them back up if we get, get this equipment that you need?
Get the vehicles? You mean, I mean, how, if we get the equipment and put it in the vehicles? Should be same day? Or, or, I, I, listen, 19, it's however fast the IT can, can get them, yeah. I mean, I'll tell him he can do 19 in a day, but I bet he tells me no.
Oh, no. No.
It's heard.
Mr. Jones?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Ms. Zisby? Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. And next, we have an order to approve appropriation of reimbursement funds for PD. Chief?
Yes, we're just asking that these listed reimbursement funds be returned to their respective accounts, most of it's just extra duty services that the officers worked.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds for the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Last on the agenda, we have finance. First up is ordinance to approve the appropriation of funds for salary adjustments for the Conway Fire Department. At this time, I will turn this over to Alderman Grimes.
All right. Again, a lot of info, well, we're going to go over what we talked about last time and formalize it with an ordinance, and we have some new information to present, to keep following up on this. And again, I will try to be concise with it, there's a lot of info, and we will have something on the screen here later. In your packet is the pay scale, that again, the structure originated from Chief Winter and his committee. In the last meeting, we had four options, and we chose option four, a little modified option four, if you remember, and that's what's, that's what's outlined in this ordinance. We adopted this new structure, adding two new positions, the firefighter senior and the, the engineer senior, rather, and the captain senior with new salaries. All positions except the firefighter basic and firefighter general receive a 2% raise. We adopted the incentives, the education and language pay, and we did not, and, and the certificate pay, and we did not adopt the longevity, something we revisit in October, because it's only paid out once anyway, in November. And so the total of that, including the LOPF contribution, came out to about $320,000. The plan is to make it effective mid-year, the actual date is June 28th, because that's the beginning of a new pay cycle. And so half a year of 320 is 160, and that's what's reflected in this ordinance, to amend the general fund to add 160 to, to this category, to pay for this. And so that's what, now, there is one little caveat that, that doesn't make any difference here. If you're looking, your, the one that's in your packet, this was odd, I didn't catch it, and I think Mr. Skinner caught it. The, under the, if you go to the back page, under the current, the fire assistant chief basic staff, the old salary, or current salary, rather, was 88 force, 88, 714, which was actually lower than the position above it. So if you got a promotion, you actually took more money. So it's a moot point, there was nobody in that position. I'm assuming probably, I don't know how long that's been flip-flopped, and I'm assuming nobody's been in that position for a while, or would have noticed the pay cut when they got promotion. So anyway, you'll see what we did, we just plugged in a number of $93,000, which is between the one above it and below it. So that's the only modification from what we saw, again, as no dollar difference, because there's nobody in that position. So that's the only difference there. So that is what the ordinance is that we're going to vote on tonight, to take this first step to address issues with Fire Department compensation. And here are some more numbers on that. Again, the total was about $320,000, which represented an overall increase of 3.6%. Several got zero, but they were all the brand-new firefighter basics who haven't even been here long enough to accumulate any certificate hours to get the certificate paid. But then 63, or 63 personnel got 3% raise or more, all right, out of this. 21 people got 6% or more, all right? Again, most of those were the ones who, with the new positions, the advanced captain, they went up and got a decent bump. Anyway, the highest was 8.4%. So anyways, some significant increases for certain positions where it was needed. So that's what the ordinance is for, for this one to take that first step. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Counsel, any questions?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance to adjust salaries, Conway Fire Department. Any further discussion?
No that there's any discussion, but based on what I've been seeing and hearing, I think what we need to make sure that people do understand, just as David said, this is a first step, not an only step.
And after this, I've got some more information we're going to look at, keep talking. It'll backdate to the June 28th, so they'll get
That's right.
Yeah, that's right. I guess my question is for Mr. Pinkman, do we need emergency clause on this, or is it?
I love these left-field questions at the last minute. I think it's probably the safest practice, since it's going to go into effect essentially immediately or retroactively.
Yeah.
I'll add to my adoption, the emergency clause.
Second is what?
We have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
And the, and the emergency clause, Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Those both pass eight to zero.
Before we come back to fire, let's go ahead and finish this last item on the agenda, D2. It's an ordinance to authorize a change for bilingual incentive for the Conway Police Department. They, they currently have four people who qualify for that, and they're paid, I believe it was $750. We've taken fire to $3,000, so this is just going to make it match. It will take the police bilingual incentive to $3,000 as well, okay?
That was actually our next, next item, item. But thank you, Mr. Grimes. So that's it, ordinance to approve change for bilingual incentives for the Conway Police Department.
Make a motion for adoption.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Miss Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter? Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Counsel, that's all
Actually, we probably ought to do the same timing, emergency clause, to make it go back.
Okay.
So I'm in my motion to include an emergency clause. That's what I do, Mr. Pinkman?
Have a motion and a second to amend and add an emergency clause for the bilingual incentive Conway Police Department. Any further discussion?
Do we need to state that it would be back to June 23?
28. I think the ordinance does. I don't know if it specifies the date or not.
Does not say that.
Then have a date on it.
Okay. Yeah, just to make sure, effective June 28th.
Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Spurgers?
Aye.
This is eight to zero. That's all we have now, counsel. Uh, look at your calendars.
Hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna talk more about the next steps for the fire.
All right, good deal.
Mr. Ledbetter asked me to get some information together, and I've got some information together. All right. Got video ready to go, not just yet, I don't need, yeah, I got a couple of things to pass out first. Take that, that, and that, one of those. Get it around. Those, pass that around.
Okay, what you're getting is this sheet that looks familiar with the different struck, the different levels and different pay. After our last meeting, Chief Winter met with his internal crew of firemen to try to apply some different numbers to it, and this is what they came back with. And for the purpose going forward, you see at the top, it's called goal, that's what's encircled. Any, any numbers you see future, some other things that this is, that's based upon this, this goal, all right? But you see what they did, and, you know, there's lots of ways to slice this up, but they compressed a couple of, of positions in engineer and captain. You know, as we've talked about, there's, with a lot of positions, there's little room between some of these positions, having real movement. So, if we did something like this, you could have a little more leeway between some of these positions. Anyway, keep that sheet handy for what that is. Want to keep put the first slide up on the thing? Size it up to fit somehow? Can you size it up to fit all in there somehow? This is, this is the sheet numbered one that you just got. No, that's fine, you can start at the top and scroll down, that's fine. It's fine, you can just do that. Okay, all right. The question was asked to compare it to North Little Rock to see what we needed to do to get equal or close to North Little Rock. And so, what you see, this is from the budget. So, this is, I, man, I spent a lot of time digging through North Little Rock's budget, and it's quite interesting. Some interesting things to found them there, I'll share later. But anyway, I went, I went through their budget quite a bit to kind of find some things, but this is on the 2025 budget from North Little Rock and Conway. You can see North Little Rock has 166 firefighters, they budget salary item, and for some reason, they break out line items separately for food, holiday. There you go. That's perfect. Perfect enough. All right, thank you. Food, holiday, longevity, education, bilingual. Now, I, doesn't really matter, I guess. I don't know why they would split out food and holiday, that's not really incentive, you get that for showing up. Regardless, it is, it is paid, it's compensation, and it is included. So, I just kind of looked that in the salaries, you can see what they make there. I don't know why they would separate it out, but it's a separate line item in their budget. Maybe perhaps the only thing I can think of is if, for some reason, if times got tough and their sales taxes took a big hit, it'd be very difficult, if not impossible, to cut salary, but I guess in theory, you could cut their food allowance. I, I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, so it, it's in there. Then they do pay longevity, they actually begin it, $8 a month, evidently the first month you work there. So, they, it's, they call that longevity. And then incentive and bilingual, and you see their total pay. Their budget is about $12,700, or $12,700,000. All right. That next column, column G, Conway O, that's what it was before we enacted what we enacted tonight. You see, we were short, we were, on average, that yellow line, we have 113 firefighters on the budget. Now, the, the sheets I've been working with are at 112, because when I started this exercise, we were one vacant position, so it's off by one person, but not enough to make any difference. What I'm gonna do after this new stuff is implemented, put in there, I'm gonna rework it with 113 number, so it's just even a little more accurate. Anyway, 113 authorized positions, salary $7,200,000. We don't offer any food or holiday. The only education I carved out, that's the, that's the $4,000 we pay for per minute, okay? And so, you can see, if you just want to compare North Little Rock, the average was $64,000, which was about $12,000 under North Little Rock. I've seen some numbers banked around that we're 30% under North Little Rock. Well, we're only about 16% under North Little Rock on average, and after tonight, we're down about 13% under North Little Rock. You see the new column, that reflects what we enacted tonight. That gave us, we made up about $2,300 on average per person with what we did tonight, so a good first step. And you see, if we wanted to match North Little Rock completely, we need $1,380,000, including the 24% LOP contribution, all right? Now, that goal, that last one under column M, that goal, that again, is the one that Chief Winter and his folks came up with. If you plug those numbers in, it gets us probably as close as, I mean, close enough, we'd be only 2.6% under North Little Rock. This would put longevity pay back in. Of course, the bigger, the bigger bump is in the salary. Put longevity pay in, the education, they, they put some different levels for education, which is fine, if they want to earn it, that's certainly fine. And so, yeah, that, that's what this goal would get us to, all right? So, again, that's the easy part. It's easy, that's the easy part of a piece of paper. How to pay for it is the harder part, all right? And I do want to make it clear, the lack of further movement on this immediately is not for lack of want-to, it's for a lack of immediate money. Now, what we do is, is gonna be in there annually, all right? And so, I was comfortable doing the 320 annual for what we did. It also, it's got the structure in place that I think is more valuable going forward. And so, it's difficult, if not impossible, to find any mid-year money unless you just had, like it was two, three years ago, sales taxes just booming. They're not, so. So, for the immediate, immediate future, I don't know what else we can necessarily do except to continue to look at this and then find ways in going into next year to try to remedy more of this, okay? Go to the next slide, talking, I found some interesting things in the, the budget, the revenue side of this. A little smaller. Glad you're doing that and not me. Thank you. This is the sheet Alderman y'all have, number two. Perfect, thank you. All right. From North Little Rock's budget and from our budget, on the line, again, as we talked, this is general fund. So, their, their city sales tax rate is 2.0 and ours is 1.75. It really makes little sense to talk about what's in the street fund or ANP fund, because you can't legally spend that on general fund items, all right? So, if you look at general fund, your sales tax for the general fund, city sales tax generates about $46 million, ours generates a little over 30 to the general fund. Line six, line F, they participate in their county sales tax, a tune of $18 million a year. We get a goose egg, all right? Now, some other things in their, in their general fund, franchise fees, I just put that up there, except it was one of the bigger ones, they're about equal. One that I found that was interesting, dog licenses, we budget $20,000 annually for income from dog licenses, they budget $80,000 annually from dog licenses. So, either they charge a whole lot more, or their nickname of Dog Town really is correct, and they have a whole lot of dogs in North Little Rock. Either way, $80,000 for dog licenses compared to 24 hours. Now, that's, that's not a big difference, but their property tax is, it's almost double ours, all right? They get almost double from property taxes. Another goose egg for Conway column, but they get $12 million from their utility directly, all right? They own their utility, they can take the money out, we, we cannot. And then you see the others. So, the general fund, total general, they operate the total general fund of $95 million, Conway's is $51 million. So, you look at fire and police as a percent, we actually spend more of our general fund on public safety. So, at any rate, that's just an interesting look at the general fund revenue side of it. So, possible solutions, again, for the short, short term, there are not many, but going forward, what I found in North Little Rock's budget was part of their general fund revenue, they get $2 million annually from business licenses, okay? We do not have business licenses in Conway, and I like it that way, but it seems like every now and then, the topic of business licenses comes up because folks in the fire department have a legitimate concern that sometimes they go into a new business or a redone business, and they're storing chemicals or things that could be dangerous to them, they don't know about it, okay? So, just a thought, you know, if we turned over business licenses to the fire department to monitor, that would give them a chance to go inspect these businesses once a year or whatever, generate $2 million, just getting spitballing here, okay? Another thing I found, and this was interesting, Springdale operates its own ambulance service, and in their budget, they put in revenue for ambulance each year of about $2 million of revenue. You know, every, it seemed like every time I see an ambulance heading somewhere in Conway, there's a fire truck right behind you, a million-dollar fire truck that is not going to fight a fire, all right? And what I, what happens is, and, and you don't know if it was a car wreck with multiple serious injuries or whatnot, but I know a lot of times I see both vehicles parked in senior living centers. At any rate, the ambulance goes home, they have a clerk generate a bill, and they get paid. Our guys go back to the station house, and we don't get paid. So, anyway, Springdale operates their own ambulance service, Russellville does theirs, Jacksonville does theirs. So, possible revenue stream for fire department. So, anyway, that, that's two things that, that just kind of came up, and I'm sure there's some other ways we can look at it, but that in a nutshell is what I have tonight.
Okay, I want, and this is nothing negative to say about the fire department, but you're talking about the fire department and the ambulance. I had a situation in my house, the fire department showed up first and saved a life, and so you can't give them enough praise or kudos for coming and.
Oh, 100%, 100%. But guess what? We got paid for that.
But you might have to pay them, but what I'm saying is, is no way we can cut that out.
I'm not talking about cutting anything out. I'm talking about just doing it. I mean, we're going anyway. Going anyway. But, and, and you know, if we, if we did it as a real ambulance service, we wouldn't be taking these million-dollar fire trucks, we'd be taking an ambulance, you know? So, yeah, no, they, they do tremendous work, and, and oftentimes, we get there before.
That's what I'm saying.
Somebody does, absolutely, no, I'm not saying we stopped doing that, I'm just saying we find a way to make money off of it.
Well, I'm 100% for that, because they saved a life.
Yeah, absolutely, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And it wasn't even me.
So, that's what we can continue to dwell on as we go forward, you know, short-term, medium-term, and long-term.
Good, I appreciate that. We gotta go.
We gotta get to.
Absolutely.
Get us there.
Absolutely, yeah, no, absolutely.
Might get their calendars out. Okay, we're gonna meet again next Tuesday, and we will have representatives from the chamber here. We will be discussing and asking questions about the possibility of a sales tax, and then we'll go back to our regular August meeting dates, so we'll meet again August 12th and August 19th. That is the second and fourth Tuesday, is that correct, of August? Somebody fact-checked me there.
It's 6 o'clock next Tuesday.
That's why I asked y'all to fact-check me. I was probably on 2026. Okay, so what are the correct dates, Ms. Mel?
26.
And did you say we were, we were gonna meet on?
6 o'clock or 6:30?
6 o'clock.
6?
Yes, sir.
And you said we will meet next Tuesday on Tuesday, the 29th as well?
Correct. Correct. We'll get started on that. And then finally, I want to express how exciting the opening of the community center was. Yes. I have, I don't know that I've ever seen as many smiling faces from children, and the, the thing that, that's, that's what a community is.